...to the board.
Pledge of leaders, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in the name of justice for all.
Okay, what's that, can you do it? Uh, payroll and then the checks, uh, design.
Sign.
That's all we know, yeah.
Meeting minutes? Meeting questions?
Uh, yeah, meeting minutes.
Uh, driveway permits for Meadows.
I noticed that you didn't sign it on the part where you're going to sign it.
You saw it, you seen that?
Is this, is this the guy on that one hill?
Oh, I didn't sign it because, hang on.
The note's on the back.
Yeah.
Is this, um...
Yes.
Did I just call him?
No.
He just called me, it's still okay, but he's gonna move the driveway down hill thirty feet.
Okay, that's, I want to...
And I'm okay with it because where he was gonna put the road, they started to dig and then ledge, and then I moved down thirty feet, it's fine.
Okay, so you're comfortable.
No, it's fine, it's actually better downhill, not that it was a problem where it was, but it's much better.
What's that, uh, going up down hill, is this on the left side or right?
It's on the right inside, right before where Josh Cable is logging last winter.
Oh, right at the top.
Basically at the top, that piece of property runs from there all the way down the opposite, the same side of the road, but it ends on the opposite side of the road, right by Derek.
That's what started the long run where you wanted them to go. That's why I wanted, that's why I didn't sign it. Okay, now the Vasco weight, Chris Vasco weights, uh, are used assessment adjustment, you're comfortable with everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Also already been reviewed by Avatar, Avatar actually went up and visited us.
Okay.
Yeah, we did that.
That's also, that's also...
There were two applications.
Okay, just making sure, um, signed up on authorizing sale of Raffin tickets for the, to be the bill group. We held the exemption application, Jared Downs, the assessor, had a car reviewed it, but it's okay. We all signed off. Here's dinner, uh, Lee and Kathleen Diner.
Dinner.
Dinner.
Uh, fifty-four Hotel Road, um, it's an basement, it's a house, but it's...
I got a moment to talk about that in the non-public.
In the non-public?
Before I sign off on it.
Okay.
Um, we do have, well, we have a non-public leader, um...
It has to be separate, it's a different topic.
It's still on the topic of Avatar, though, that's, that's good, um...
Oh, okay, so you can add to...
No, I was gonna add it to Chief's, I don't know if I, if we can do that or not.
Yes.
Okay.
It's on the same subject.
Okay, two of us who signed off on this should be now, process this.
I, I, we have to sign off on, I just wanna make sure, you know, every, everything's good to go on that, um...
We can wait till the end of the meeting.
Well, I have to send a letter so we can process the meeting. Then you can wait.
All right, I'd rather, I'd rather not talk about that.
That's a job, I'm not asking you to talk about it, but, um, do you require...
I wanna, I wanna, I wanted the chief's input. All right, so everyone.
I wanna just do a quick one.
But Jeff has a number six, I mean, Jim, who's Jeff's?
Yeah, Yuri has a non-public, um...
So we need a non-public.
On, on the...
I agree.
Regarding, regarding Avatar.
The rest of the world.
Wow, that was pretty speedy, yeah.
Say again?
That was pretty speedy.
Yeah, we don't procrastinate. What the tax rate, so, okay, next, um, issue is the sale of town owned property. Uh, this is a piece of property, um, which is one of the, we saw it before. Uh, it's about four acres, you've walked it, um, the people have gone into, they owe the town six thousand dollars. And if you choose to sell it, you will take, uh, six thousand dollars on the sales. It's been a month bid, uh, month closed bid, uh, three, four months ago, I have to admit. Because my, because my, uh, pretty big boy and the big, the, the awful business, and he chose not to accept it because it would just barely pay for the town, it's a disaster. Now, uh, I guess two people have come up and they wanted, uh, two people are interested in purchasing. So the first decision we have to make as a town is we still want to sell this to recruit our tax rate. And that's the, uh, question we're looking at. And, you know, that'll be between the three of us to decide if we're gonna sell it, okay? The process, if we do decide to sell it, it is, it has to be done through, well, first we'll get a value here and get that value from another town. The values in town is a magnitude increase, uh, we release the sales. Then the next step is to put it on for a closed bid, have it be notified, go out for a closed bid and set date, we'll, we, and we ask them to put out the equipment, the actual, um, the location. And then we open, seal bids and see who puts in the most money. Uh, and then, then the next, that last step is we then, as three people select, sit down, see if we can accept it.
Is, uh, is, is this something we, we don't need any town vote on, or, uh, as far as, uh, town properties go?
No, town probably owns the property, it's been more than three years.
Okay, so, so that is a stipulation, right? All right.
Do we want to miss anything in that summary?
Uh, no, we just have to determine a minimum bid. And it doesn't have to be done in a non-public, and you have to, you know, talk about yourselves, or if you wanna talk later, or whatever.
We... Value it.
Well, the value, like, how much was it right now? Um, I think it would be some new assessment.
For these, so their bids already, are they done on this?
Yeah.
All done, okay.
We're gonna have to, have sealed it. To be, the assessment, they, um, the last assessment before the new evaluation is eighty-three... No, it was thirty-nine and three. This new assessment, we have to eighty-one and nine, which I think is...
Well, that's, that's an ending, okay, you can, what I would rather do is just present the facts, that, I think that's how you, try and stay with...
So when I look at it a year ago, the, the access is a shared driveway with, uh, that, a shovel, those, and then you take a left, it's all down over the bank, it's not gonna pull out, it's all over the bank, it's a strip by the river. And I walked it and looked at it, and it looked to me like it was entirely flooded. And really not anything was available, unless maybe you were gonna put in campsites, camper, something like that. But it drops right down to the river, there's a steep bank, there's like a little shell, and then it's a secondary bank, and then there's the river, and you can tell it floods down there.
Yeah, so, so they have to build their stuff consistently, nothing.
Whatever they're gonna do, it's all gonna be flooded, it's easy to see.
Is it, I mean, is there, was there actually any practical indication, what, if you plan to do that? I mean, this isn't just for sale, so it could be, it could be just land, and they just keep the land and don't do any kind of, oh.
There's no, there's no...
Uh, no, no, that's understood, I'm, I'm just saying there, there's no plan for anyone to do anything on there.
I guess my point was, is that I feel like it doesn't have that much value because there's no, I, I didn't feel like it would actually completely suck down there outside, it's fragile, it's water, a timber, a tent, or something.
Well, I'm just trying to reduce it to six grand.
Well, the thing is, is because it's small enough, it won't be in current use, so that will, will put more taxes in the year.
Unless the people buying it have, uh, six or seven acres next to it.
Well, the neigh, one of the neighbors, had it.
Yes.
Had a, she bought it.
As far as I understand, one person, someone's interested in keeping the addresses, the other person is interested in, uh, building on it, and then it's done, this whole work is part of the circumstances for, you know, for the public.
They're ready. So they're ready.
I just wanna make sure, I believe, when the town sells, um... I believe when the town sells, uh, property and sealed bid, that the bids need to be sealed and opened in a public meeting.
True, true.
Just wanna make sure that's, I didn't want somebody getting the bids and opening them and checking them out before a public meeting, that's all.
They'd go to Lynn that too, this, this, us.
Right.
Chief, you've got it on here, the board, this, you just sent it, and you knew that piece of property.
I've seen that flood in there before, but I didn't came in that, put the building in, but, I mean, it's a piece of property the town is selling, so...
Yeah.
It just sounds funny. And then, as Gordon had mentioned, we have to go, um, you know, I don't think there's enough acres there for current use, so we're gonna be full tax law on the ever.
Yeah, and, uh, I, I mean, Avatar's assessments are being signed off by the state, and, um, I'm sure we can use the, the guideline.
Yeah, that's how, that's how we decide.
Right.
So...
I mean, if, if, if the property is ultimately gonna be sold, um, I'm not sure exactly typically how, uh, owners probably typically would, uh, put it on market, assuming using some type of, uh, real estate.
Yeah, we're gonna use public, it's, it's our whole process.
Okay.
We have, we have to follow that process, we advertise it, we advertise it.
A few months ago, Richard Dowen, the investment, that's why we turned down the lot that we were presenting to five cities. The value of that time is eighteen to twenty-four thousand. Um, I do have a, a message intended, intended to see that has changed. Even though the assessment, uh, you have to take into consideration the use of the...
Yeah, but probably wasn't the actual number. Yeah, I, I have to try the assessments, so we can go on to the show. Okay, so, I think I'm gonna make a motion here, and we take a vote to decide whether to sell the property or not sell it.
Uh, I guess we did, I guess just pick which one you want.
Yeah, I'd option to sell, we, we, yeah, we're, so...
I'll second your motion. I'll, I'll vote, yes?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, okay, so, you know...
Do you wanna say the minimum bid, though?
The what was down on this?
Fifteen twenty-four.
I'd say twenty-four.
I find it hard to believe that money was worth any more than that right there, if you can get somebody to pay that.
I think, I appreciate your comment, but I just need to make a decision, I'd love to, I'm gonna, if no one makes a bid the first time, you know what, just lower it, the minimum bid, then you can do it again. Do you have any comments?
No, no, I think somebody probably, John here's an interesting party, I'm just the second set of ears.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that, okay, I should, I should, you gotta speak up.
Well, well, I don't think it's gonna affect your decision, because my understanding, when a town puts a piece of property out to bid...
Right.
You essentially, as the buyer, you don't have the capacity to do due diligence at that point. You either put in your bid or you don't, but you don't get the opportunity to have a test bid, dog, or whatever. It's just, you make the bid, and you get stuck with something that's not buildable, or it is. So I don't think we really have much to add, it would be more for John to step away and say, do I wanna throw the dice on that lot? As opposed to if it was a more conventional sale, you'd say, okay, well, I'll make an offer contingent upon, you know, an approved building plan, something like that, so...
You probably want to locate, uh, the town with that, that mess, and then you save it before. They would wanna check that out.
The hydrology, the hydrology studies in this valley are, so, it's, um, a piece of advice for you, if, uh, this, um, the director of the science program, uh, the camp, and they did the hydrology study, so if you wanna talk to somebody first hand, who understands that, which, uh, update the topic, okay?
Cool.
Yeah, your problem is that the, I think, the circumstances. It's not, it's gonna play a role. It was, uh, that, you know what, I'm not legislating anything, I'm just giving you, that's probably, uh... Where do you plan to build it?
It should probably be a shop, with a place to live over it.
It's kinda like on the edge, you walk, it's like something might work, something might not, and this is kind of a form of our finding out, like, okay, this is gonna go towards a process where due diligence can't be done before the purchase, so it's making me think, like, okay, probably not. A smart choice.
We, we gotta, we gotta set the process, we have to follow it.
Yeah, right.
We're selecting, we commit by time, we've still gotta follow the statement, you know, that's...
Yeah, for sure.
I, I honestly can't make a, an educated guess, um, unless, uh, you know, if, if there's someone else that, that makes some kind of suggestion on, um, the value of the property, I'd probably end up going that route, um. I, I don't know much about, uh, you know, properties and how, uh, how...
That is just the guy, yeah, I've just, I've said twenty-four thousand, I was, not gonna study it, which is Avatar's.
I, I haven't seen a lot of data, and this is the, the first time I've actually, I don't know.
Now, he's, he's been a real stakeholder, so...
I'm, I'm saying this is a specific property sale, um, you know, we're just discussing assessments and that sort of thing now, um... What I said, the minimum bid, that's, that's fine, uh...
What was supposed to be that?
Okay, I, I, I... I'm probably gonna defer, as far as if you guys wanna come up with a price, but if you have more, uh, who are more educated on some sort of topic, then, like, I will only take your...
I was just making identification with twenty-four thousand dollars, or the estimate, or the balance, I don't know, so can we use Avatar?
Eighty thousand, I think, because...
This is the, this is the, the Govent Realty and Home and Balance, okay, all right. All right, then, then I'd be, I'd be able to add, um, uh, more than what's around that, I'll...
Do we need to vote on that?
No, probably.
Motion, I second it. You seconded your motion.
I, I, well, I, okay, we, we made a motion, and we all agreed that we were going to vote, like, or that we were going to sell. Now, I think we need to make a motion to actually, uh, set, set the minimum bid, right?
And the minimum bid, that's what we need.
Okay. If I want at least thirty days to advertise it, so if I want like forty-five or sixty days, or something?
It's a way to be on a process.
September, we need September. Yeah, I made a motion that the minimum bid is twenty-four thousand dollars, and all of it is happening, and it's advertised in four weeks. I'll second that, and that the bid was open in six weeks.
Fair enough.
Now, I'm just trying to...
I'll, I'll vote yes.
Oh, yes. Any questions? Do you have a motion for this, maybe? So you said in, in four weeks that bid will open, that you're gonna advertise it in four weeks? The bids will be met, and the bid will be open in six weeks. So is there, uh, select what is being inserted to...
Yeah, yeah, I found pretty complicated.
Yeah, I think it's, and the, the estimate was just what the real stakeholder, I'm not a real stakeholder.
Well, like you said, it doesn't matter anyway, if you don't get any bids, you know you gotta lower the price, but it pushes the whole process back a little bit.
You're not a real stakeholder, which is good.
Part of the people that, that specialize in it, yeah.
Cool, thanks, guys. Good luck.
Okay, I'm reporting the town officials, I started, slept with, uh, Farmers Market, it's held this Saturday, it was well attended, um... Six oh three Eats wasn't there, and I think she really brings a lot of attention to, and people coming here, so she's gonna be there for all the, uh, Farmers Market from now on. On August fourteenth, Saturday, from five to seven o'clock, uh, we have dinner on the bridge. It's a fundraising event, sponsored by the River Veterans Association. We're raising funds to continue the walkways in that area, to continue, uh, carrying the areas around the river down there. And, uh, it's gonna, for August fourteenth, I'm gonna give this to you so you can have it. And we'll post it at, uh, Shawnee's, the post office, the library, town offices, and the transfer station. And then at, uh, at the Farmers Market, Sony will be selling two units today. Tim and Kim are gonna do the smoking beer barbecue, they're gonna do food, um, the, uh, Baker and Kent Henry's gonna be the same distance he did last time, a dinner room, and then, uh, Kent Marywood is gonna do the mac and cheese, anybody's pitching into that.
Yeah, Eric, Kurt, uh, he's actually gonna be opening up a permanent spot, too. Do we have a barbecue, uh, barbecue somewhere?
Yeah, he's gonna do a permanent spot over on Dortes's Road. And, the reason I'm bringing this up now is I just wanna make sure, while we, Jeff here, you guys are okay with this?
Um, the permanent spot, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, we're doing it on the bridge.
Oh, that, yeah, yeah, the only thing that I have to add there is if you're going to have more than fifty people, I have to write in.
Oh, yeah.
Public, operational, yeah.
I think we have a lot more than two.
I know you guess.
That's why I have to throw that out there, because, yeah, I think, I think we, uh, we discussed that last year, so we'll all have to call it on here.
Okay, is this something we gotta do?
Yeah, I can do it.
I'm not really good at drawing, so... Now, I didn't mean it that way, but I, I wanna be polite.
You're sinking quick.
I don't have a good strategy.
We'll, we'll make sure you have the property, and working place.
Awesome, and, uh, Chief, for your point of view, for security?
Yeah, I don't have the, uh, at all.
I could get in trouble, sure. Okay, um, the GPS Culver project is, uh, still moving on, Wesley is going out, he did, uh, he's supposed to do a couple of roads today.
I haven't heard from anybody.
Okay, wasn't the best day to be out.
So, yeah, from me, but...
He's got a lot of energy into this, and he's trying to do a good job, um, and if anybody knows any other kids in town that wanna come out with that, it's project.
Periodically, just pass off that GPS, Wesley, actually, not.
Wesley knows to come to see you, and he understands how that information, as soon as he gets that three or four roads, he's gonna come to see you.
Yep. That way it's backed up, so he writes it, drops it, or something, at least, it doesn't have to be too...
Was this regarding, like, our PIS or something?
Yeah, third, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm saving, I'm saving the culvers as shape files.
Our goal with this thing is to, uh, approach being, with a hesitation grant, and once we understand the hydro, the hydrology studies are disvalued and created, once we know all the culver studies, hydrologists can then look at them and see what culvers, what, where we need for signs and culvers in town, and to develop the maintenance schedule for, for, or do that, just to make sure they don't have, uh, flooding, or, 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 in the future. So that's the game plan of that. Um, Classics Road Committee met last night, what did you...
We had excellent representation, I estimate, really, twenty people?
Yeah.
Probably, at least twenty.
Yeah, about twenty. Jeff and all of them there, residents, officers there, uh, everybody was working together. Yeah, so it was kind of trying to peel our way through, I didn't expect that many people, so it was kind of my, my fault for not giving it organized better, targeted. But we came up, uh, there was a lot of discussions, and there was a lot of good information that was brought up, and we decided to start working on two roads in particular. I guess one of the general things that came up was that before the town really does anything that's major in any of these classics roads or anything, it was brought up by people that have dealt with this before, that we authorize or try to make someone do something, or have much to do with these classics roads, and then it turns out later that it's fully discontinued, not classics, that we can be held liable for blocking people, damage, whatever. So that really, as you start to work on some of these things, the first thing that needs to be done is to get the actual equation. There's a lot of assumptions about what roads are and are not classics in town, and there's a lot of roads in general next town. There's quite a few that we think are fully discontinued, there's quite a few that are believed to be classics. But we need to go through road files, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do anything with some of these, we have to get the road layout. Yep, and then we have to get the discontinuing list to know if it's fully discontinued or class six, because if we do something incorrect, we could potentially get in trouble or be held liable. So we named a couple, we kind of picked three roads of the most major importance, one of them is the Oak Hill emergency lane, but that's basically. There's not much to do on that one right now, because we know that was Class Six, that was an impact meeting. So the other two that we picked that have to focus on, I'm gonna work with Francis, one of them, who was very helpful, and brought his road binder. That's back there.
Some, some deters and all.
Yeah, and we're going to work to pull out those layouts and discontinuances, two in particular. One of them is the Ellsworth Hill Road from Camp Victory to Maple Hill Road. As, uh, as Chief Ames pointed out, that's a potential emergency lane, yeah, because of the Maple Hill Bridge, the Ellsworth Hill Bridge. And to look into maybe making that one. But we gotta do research first.
Correct.
Make sure what the classification is. So we're gonna work with Francis and try to get that done. And then the other one was, uh, the Saunders Hill Road. So the Silver Bridge, last by far, we've talked with one of the guys over there. So from there, maps all the way back around to, I call it the real road. But the, uh, tax maps have labeled three that remains, but it's a map.
So. So we've gotta identify, what are the Class Six roads we have in mind? What's been discontinued? And then we know the active Class Six roads, and, and get the proper knowledge.
One, one of the big issues that we're gonna run into is that the town office in Linnburg burned, and all the records were in it. Uh, so there are no records between the year of seventeen eighty.
Eighteen twenty-eight.
Seventeen eighty to eighteen twenty-eight.
No, eighteen twenty-eight.
Okay, eighteen twenty-eight to eighteen ninety.
That's a long time.
So that's a long time, there's like seventy years there that there's no records, and that's a big problem. Because if there are no records, then one of the guys there told us that it is not gonna be considered a Class Six road if you, if it's taken to court. It will be the landlord's property.
It could be disputed.
It can be disputed very easily. And it, it probably would not, in the court of law, be the town's Class Six road, it would be the, the landlord's at that point.
That's his opinion.
Right.
Who's his?
Bob.
Bob Green.
Oh, Bob Green, okay, okay. He's research.
So, there's a lot of work to do before.
I didn't know.
Some decisions are made.
So we can't, if we wanted to go, there's a lot of roads, mainly the middle woods, that actually could be fully discontinued, we don't really look at it. But those are kind of, gonna be pushed back, we really need to pick the couple that are important. Like Ellsworth Hill, a potentially emergency lane, and Saunders Hill Road, because there's a lot of landowners up through there. They all have varying opinions of what they want to see. And before we can do much, we gotta figure that out. So I'm gonna work with Francis, as soon as we get some clarity on those issues, also a meeting, notify everybody, and we'll go through it again. Another topic that was discussed that we could do without that is potentially putting up unlocked gates. Or allowing landlords to put up unlocked gates at entrances. If we have some of those Class Six roads are the same signs, now if you're building the emergency road, it could be charged, blah, blah, blah. Having that mounted.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the decisions that needs to be made.
Right.
Is once you establish all the Class Six roads, the next mission is, what's the decision of gates and what?
State protections.
protections.
Addressing whatever issues do, contact the landlord, see what they want, what issues are, but that particular road. If it has town benefit, like Ellsworth Hill may have town benefit versus the Saunders Hill Road in the middle, there's kind of a no man's land, where it's just gone. And there's two ends that are believed to be Class Six. And then each end has its own separate owners that want different things. But one of the things that we could do is you, you could put up gates and stuff that are easy to unlock with those signs, and at least then people are on notice. And if you catch them, you get them on camera doing damage, you bring it to Chief Trot, and maybe get something done.
Correct.
So that's an easy.
Bob Green is doing a canvas for all these roads.
Yeah. So that's probably something that's gonna come up on some of these roads. And then, uh, the classifications is what we're gonna do with that. On a couple roads at a time, not all of them, because there's too many.
Yeah. Yeah, you're focusing on, on sort of my side of the, of the town, is there any on the east side?
There is, but a lot of them are like dead ends and out of the woods, and they're less, they have less importance, and they tend to have less issues. These other ones are longer stretches, and they tend to go from one road to another, so there's more traffic. Whereas the dead end ones that go out through the trees and, um, nobody really cares.
Yeah. Before the floods got to control in the valley, the five question control dams, the majority of the traffic was on, on, on the old county road.
The other thing that I was gonna bring up a minute ago, I've seen multiple articles online about the dams, the New Hampshire State Dams, of which we have quite a few in town. And there's, as part of this infrastructure bill that could be coming, is that those dams are potentially earmarked for a lot of money. Because a lot of them have been flagged as being in very poor condition.
Yeah, I, I, we presented a condition here a couple of months ago.
Yes.
I thought the Army Corps of Engineers was coming to do work on two of them this summer.
Yeah, they, they're scheduled to come in. I haven't seen it.
No, I haven't either.
Because those dams have been going like the seventies.
Seventies.
And haven't had any major upheaval other than coming. So, any road that's downhill or low, there's an alternative route, you might wanna think about it. So we had a productive discussion, we have lots of people, started some ideas.
So you're gonna work dam plan, what is your next step?
I wanna get that information with Francis. So once I have on those two roads, if we can get those classifications, then we can bring that to the next meeting, and then start discussing what to do with those roads. But we can't really have a meeting until we know what the classifications are, because we can't make any judgments.
So you're gonna go through the old dam?
You gotta go through, get the layouts and the discontinuances, and we can get, try to determine what it actually is.
It's a logical approach.
Because otherwise, it's kind of, we might be wasting our time.
Plan. So you're keeping everybody in the committee abreast of what you're doing, so just to get their enthusiasm and their interest, because I think you gotta have a spirit committee.
There was a lot of representation last night, we ran out of chairs, we're gonna have to have more chairs next time. As soon as I get that information kind of together, then I'll, yeah, I'll try to notify everyone just like we did.
Okay.
Army people. There's only thing I'd add on that, Jordan, is before you even come to the town meeting, as far as like building on discontinued roads.
We made it there.
Um, if, and, what do you mean by that, like, if you decide not to discontinue any roads?
So, again, some of the ones that could be discontinued are the low priority ones, the ones that really nobody cares about. We're really trying to focus on the high traffic, the ones that have town importance, the ones that have had landowner issues, uh, the longest ones. And those aren't really, the point isn't to discontinue those, it's just to address whatever issues that's going on with each one of the road.
Okay, so I, I guess ultimately what I was getting at is, before you ultimately did make, tried to get some type of decision on that. I guess I hope that you got input from whoever, any person on that, on that Class Six road.
If anything's danger was gonna take place, I think we're gonna discontinue it, we have to probably, you know, file.
Yeah, it's gonna be a vote.
No.
It's gotta be a vote.
I, I believe, I believe, I, I believe that's actually, I, I thought that was a town vote, but I think.
Yes.
Um, so.
I don't think this, I doubt we're gonna get to the point where we put that any road is discontinue this year. I bet, depending what, I have on my plate and the committee and all the research, it's like the tip of the iceberg. To go through all those roads and what are the four record keep things, the fire and everything like that, they could take years to go through all that. So we're gonna focus on the most important ones of the town, try to address simple issues that we can take care of without anything too major or lawsuits.
Yeah, my goal in this committee is to, to help preserve the Class Six roads that exist now, that set of rules for the use of, um, at least the safety of it.
To combine recreation, yeah, landowner, you know, excellent responsibilities, and then town, you know, interest. Okay, awesome.
Okay, last point, um, a note to all the, um, issues. We're six months into this town budget, uh, take a look at your budgets, just to see where you stand. And, uh.
Do you say that because we're eating through our budgets, or just in general?
I say that because we're six months into it, I've gone through some areas here that are a little higher than they need to be. I think everybody's doing a good job, but it's, just take a look at it, and see, you, you know the expenses, you're gonna need in the next six months. Just to make sure we get the, the most highest.
Um, I mean, just to add to that, I, I know there is, or there has been, you know, chatter, I hear people coming up, uh, to me, uh, in various different ways. I'm sharing with Tab as well, and everyone else. I mean, my plan is to try to scrutinize basically everything on the budget that ends up coming up this upcoming year. Um, I know we're trying to do our best to try to, you know, keep taxes down and whatnot, so, um, I'm just, I'm gonna stress again that. As many people have input during these, uh, or before budget pairings, for the school and for the town, um, come to the budget pairings as well. Make sure, like, your voice is heard, so.
That's sixty-four cents of every dollar taxed out of those school budgets in school, everybody should do it in school.
A- absolutely, I, I just wanna make sure no, nobody, uh, make sure everyone's educated in the fact that coming, coming to town meeting and voting at town meeting, or coming to the school meeting and voting there, that's the wrong time to try to change things. Um, sure, you could all boil things down, but, um, we really shouldn't make it more than.
Okay. Just a note on that point, I just wanna point out that, from, from memory, plus or minus, I believe, I remember, the fire department, the police department, the highway department. All be basically flat budgets, or maybe even under. And from a few years ago, like, a couple boards, maybe one or two renovations ago, the highway department budget is like a lot less. I think I remember seeing numbers of like over four hundred something, like, five years ago, and it's gone down a lot.
Two thousand eighteen was four hundred and twenty thousand. Two thousand nineteen, it got cut to three hundred and sixteen thousand.
Right. That's a massive cut, and they put on a third guy in there.
I, I would, I would say, uh, any of the department budgets, um, because of, you know, there's so many static items in town and whatnot, um. To make sure, to make, make sure you, you, you know, you put on your budget what we all, all, ultimately need.
I think we all, we all agree, the, the, the point, the, the, the point I'm making is we're six months into the year, I just want everybody to take a deep breath. Look at things, make sure we don't have any surprises, that's all. First one, I think, Harry Bush is doing a good job.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not giving that worse than that one, that's just a warning order.
Um, do you know this?
Okay. Uh, well, uh, Chief Trot, your report.
Yes, thank you. So, um, over the last couple weeks, uh, highlights or reports that you've taken by different calls for service. I took care of a, another civil standby between two property owners in town where they had requested a civil standby, so I assisted them. Where we turned up some property to include motorcycles that we were trying to, uh, use for people who don't communicate well with each other when they left alone. So you need someone to be able to navigate and help them navigate through these things, so that's what we did. One of them rolled off and the motorcycle happy, the other one was happy when they left, and there weren't any issues, so I committed a ball for it. Uh, we did take a trespassing complaint from a New York resident, we got into the company, asked one that was in town, cutting trees, and rushed back for a income control. It was able to be with a New York resident in job form, and took care of that issue, still following him with, uh, whether it was actually a trespass issue, then to be addressed or not. I will follow up with the supervisor.
Chief, you remember asking a question on that? Or actually more general, is there, um, there's some type of buffer between the actual, or maybe it's a, I'm a department question. Buffer between the road and, um, where the, basically the town would own up until, right, it starts doing any type of agents and such, right?
Well, you have to keep in mind, Paul, you can check them on this too, you have to keep in mind as well that power lines don't always necessarily, on parallel, in the road. They can go, and they do, go across people's property.
And there is a thirty foot right away that all power lines.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Right, okay.
So.
Okay, all right, from the actual pole?
From the power lines, the middle of the power lines.
Okay, all right, got it, all right.
So when you see them coming in and doing some of the work that they're doing, which does have to be done. You know, they have an abber that, you know, is, abber, abber that works for COA. He goes out and lays out the work that they want them to do, and they go up to it, actually they're doing it right now.
I saw it, yeah, I know.
Yes, yes, yes. So, uh, so they do have the right to do it, they're mainly people of lines. Not just the right, they have an obligation, responsibility to, to the community to do that too, so, so yes.
Is that something that, uh, they're obligated to, if it's going through, you know, there's a right of way for these power lines going through some properties? Do they have the obligation to actually notify the property owner beforehand, or no?
Well, it depends on what the layout of the property is. I mean. People's question, if they, if they're gonna buy a house, they'll come and talk to you. I mean, I find, um, they've, we've got a lot of problems, power lines, they come in and just say, okay, come in on these days, and.
That's what I mean by it's served, that's what I mean by it.
They'll look straight for you.
I don't live in a room by everybody, though.
No.
They work on so many properties, you wouldn't have to do it.
You can't, because there's so many properties, they don't, they don't know what's a whole problem. Unless you come up and talk to them.
I have one more quick point on that. So, the one thing to watch out with tree companies is not trespassing. But if they cut any actual timber product while they're doing it, they're supposed to leave that on the site, it's still the landlord's.
Right.
And I've seen issues, not as with other, other tree companies. Um, my father busted one of his own property years ago, where the guys were taking the wood and loading it for firewood to take home themselves. And that's theft, because that wood is, but they can cut it, if it's in the right way, but they're supposed to leave it to the landlord. So, so if you suspect that's happening, that would be a theft issue, but that's not what the claim was. Now, but that's something I see with the vast, and if it was on your property, you would wanna know.
You know, they, they chip rooms.
Well, we have been notified back then several months ago.
Right.
And even recently, it's on the website, it's posted, the post office, Shawnee's here on the board. So, people, if, if they're in tune with these voices, they should know that they're coming.
Yeah, and I find the work is pretty, like, cute, too. Yeah, and you know, I, I think it's also just what some people interpret differently as to what they may or may not have the right to do. But for some property, cutting something like, like, power lines, that's visually obviously a issue, so. Okay, so, I'll continue.
Uh, let's see, I arrested a active citizen resident for a hot hatch suspension for a speeding enforcement patrol. He was subsequent to the release on a hand somewhere else, and was scheduled to come back to a different quarter for a regular paper. He was very cooperative, arrested him, made an incident. Uh, I had received my previous complaints from one of the, uh, the O H R B's, Ross, and whatever. I was able to follow up with that, and made contact with one of the, uh, obvious issues in the citation. Carry a pretty good file on it. With the help of the O H R B club, they were able to post and put signs up on the opposite side of the road that we gave the access. And we have not had a problem since then, no complaints, no issues, so, so that worked out well. The club's good about, when I bring an issue to them, I pop in the address.
Say, they're making their.
Yeah, because it makes them look bad, and this was not our club number, so let's see, I'll see. Uh, let's see. I kicked back the two O H R B patrols in the trails this weekend, that was because of Old Hyundai, and there was a poker man that was scheduled to lay down to the, you know, a lot of the O H R B's had issues with citations as well. The race track did operate this past weekend with no incidents, with the exception of an accident that occurred on the track, which cut off about forty-five minutes of the race. Uh, but after forty-five minutes, they were able to connect to the central race, they were able to. So, okay, any questions for me?
Yeah. I have another question. I have another question.
Okay.
So calls and service, we had the home day accident Saturday morning. Uh, we were also notified another tree that was struck by lightning on a private residence property. And they extinguished that themselves and thankfully it's been by okay. As far as training, we're still in the works with the waterfall of dry hydrogen operations. And we have come across a couple of issues on our hydrants that we're going to need needs and maintenance on. We dispose operations, read back from some of those properly and then draft operations and understanding the gauge, gauges and display readings, which there was some confusion on and I think that's to clarify. On other, I conducted two fire code inspections, one for P and heavy and another for rental unit. And then this past weekend, we had the mortal home days. Uh, very busy, the boost did very well for us, transit, donations, et cetera. Uh, we had the parade and worked the racetrack where we had the long over and only five minutes left. A lot of that, that's very much it. Any questions today?
Thank you.
Uh, geez, the last couple of weeks have had a lot of rain. It's really, uh, put a damper on our work. Orange sand gravels pressure broke, so we couldn't gravel for a while and, uh, they get up and running and we've had rain. We've done a lot of work around the shop. Just, well, I tried to finish Chiva Road today, was not expecting the downpours that we got. So I made soup on, uh, Chiva Road that I really should go fix tonight before I leave. And we're gonna start graveling with Kate Moonshine Road. We were supposed to start this morning and I had canceled the trucks at the last minute. Just too wet. So, uh, all goes well, we'll start Kate Moonshine tomorrow. We should have that done by early next week. Um, that'll be all the graveling this year. I'll be through my budget, real close to through all of it at that point. I honestly, the highway department's in the best shape since it has been since I got here. We have no maintenance to do. We have, I mean, our trucks, equipment, everything's in great shape. The roads are in really good shape. They're taking the rain really well.
How's the relationship going with the, uh, the dump up top in the back of?
Uh, no problems. No, no problems at all. Nope, we're all good.
Aside now, is there, has there been any updates on either of the pieces of equipment, the backhoe or the truck? Have you heard?
Yeah, I have. Um, last Thursday, I heard from Charlie at Western Star. The truck was built and being shipped to McDevitts in Manchester. He said they should see it by the middle of this week. They'll inspect it, go through it, and then it'll be shipped to Tenco. Tenco has to have it by August first. They have it by August first, which they say they should. We should have the truck by the first of October.
We're on track to have it by this winter.
We're on track to have it by October. As far as the backhoe goes, we were supposed to have that at the end of May, beginning of June. That's, they'd say COVID put everything on hold and steel was hard to get and on and on. Um, we're kind of looking at delivery date on that mid-September. So we could see both pieces really close to the same time.
I was just curious.
So that's, that's that. The last thing I wanna talk to you about, I had to call Chris from H E D today. Because I'm looking toward next year, um, identifying some road, paved roads that we have that are gonna need some help. Being paved, we have money in the expendable trust for the paving or capital reserve, I don't know what it is. So I had, had two paving companies come out and I told them I don't need pricing until October. So before we start thinking, I'm just thinking ahead. Both companies that came out, uh, I really wanted to get rid of the pavement over Dorchester Road Bridge. I don't know if you guys are familiar with, I'm not. So, um, it's past Delph Mountain Road headed toward Cross Road, almost in between the two of them. There's a bridge. It's a long bridge. It's like sixty feet, seventy feet long, I guess. Um, and it's eighteen feet wide. And both paving companies refused to put a truck or putting it on that bridge until we have a rating put on it. They both got underneath the bridge and they said, uh, 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 not a chance for putting a truck on that bridge. So I did call Chris and he said he would be willing to do it. He said, give him a few weeks and he'll give me a price. I'll have to come up with the money and the budget for another bridge in town. And Chris was on the phone with me and he said, oh, I really feel bad for you, but it's, uh, an issue of neglect and lack of maintenance in your town that has put you in this position. And he goes, I feel bad that you're looking a year ahead and how you have to get a bridge rating for a company that you drive across. And he says, is this a bridge that's used a lot? And I said, yeah, it's, it's, it's like the main bridge in town. And he said, well, he goes, you better talk to your selectmen because it probably needs to be done. Called me back about an hour later and he said he looked at it. And he said it wasn't a great report from the Hampshire DOT in two thousand nineteen. That's the last time that it was inspected.
That's a major bridge.
So I'm just letting you know, when he comes back to me with the price, I'm guessing it's gonna be more than East Side Road last year when we spent eight thousand on. Somewhere around there. I'm just letting you know, I'll have to come up with the money in my budget just so we, I guess, can have a piece of money.
Do a big sale.
Huh?
Do a big sale.
Sell the gravel pit.
Working on it.
So I'm just letting you know, that's where I stand. That's where we're at.
It is what it is. That and East Side for the future, all those bridges, guys, look at that.
Now, East Side, you're sort of pushing.
Anyway, let's go to twenty ten women on the mountain.
But it's unfortunate.
Uh, you wanna do a quick update on the gravel pits?
Yes. So last time I checked with Chris lawyer, they were working on the deed research. I, he said that he checked with them and there was nothing they needed to report on. They were doing their stuff. There wasn't any certificates at that time. In the meantime, to keep working along this week, I reached out to two different entities, I guess, that deal with conservation easements or even maybe purchasing land or protection and things like that. See what, if they have any interest at all. One was, um, Society of Protection and Endurance for us, okay, for the society. And the other one was, uh, N R C S. I reached out, looked over at them, someone that I know, see a good name of someone. So just as alternatives for selling it as a gravel pit in the future. We could entertain a vision easement. You could sell it to the state of Hampshire as a park or a wildlife area. N R C S, um, is that Tom Bieber? I was talking with Kelly Holden, but she's, um, a wildlife. So I've got with her because, uh, endangered wood pickles are in the Baker River area and it's an area I work for them. And that's, they love sandy gravelly areas in the river. And if they would like to buy it to do something like that, then great. So I've just, I've been reaching out to, I haven't heard back many of them, but this two days ago. I've been putting some dealers out to see if there's other entities that might wanna buy it outside of the ground. It would be good to bring some income into the town. Yeah, it's, it's gonna take a while, but we'd be certain it's being done and I've been reaching out slowly, see what'll be happening again.
And, um, you're female obligations, you follow the email training.
Yes. Yep. So they moved our stuff to Boston, which we do, that's a wonderful thing. They met with all four of them in Boston. Uh, this is Homeland Security and H A, that's the H S E. And we have your D E S, right, to hand around this number. The whole thing is the, uh, codes and standards. Not being equally applied, it's the lawyer that hates the nature's code and standards. And I was informed this week, this past week, that a lawyer that wrote that brief that's holding us and then a lot of other people to stay up is based off of outdated D E S regulations. It was twenty seventeen or eighteen regulations and in twenty nineteen, D E S, we did them all. And we're being held up for no reason by this lawyer based on the wrong rules. And apparently they do work with Vermont because Vermont's rules apparently are more deeply applied than ours. Even though the H R D E S claims that our rules are much more stringent than Vermont's. I, I don't know which, but I definitely think the D E S.
It sounds like the federal lawyer has a case to ask for the, with the state D E S.
So they've been going back and forth. They've given them the new, they've given them the new updated code and standards. So they're now going back through it. There's gonna be however long that takes. I was given an indefinite timeline for that. And they'll have to wait and see what that guy comes up with and then go on from that.
Sounds like more so that, uh, rather than somehow a problem, someone else didn't, or wasn't doing their job. That's what's happening.
They did do a very good job. That's right. So everybody should be upset about that. The next part was, is that Paul Hatch has been great. He's the one that gave me, I talked to Jen Harper, who was the director. And she gave me a very brief update. And then I talked to Paul Hatch and he gave me the rest of these details. He was excellent. And in the meantime, he was going through the FEMA portal because he had discovered the forty thousand dollars himself in twenty seventeen before. But as he was going through it again, he discovered another like twenty-five? Twenty-five or twenty-seven and change that also has been outstanding and is ready to go from twenty seventeen for the emergency work.
Twenty seventeen, came to hire a number of people in town to work. To clean up Hamilton Field, to, uh, to flood dams, control on roads and things like that. And everybody in town came together during that, like, a lot of people, a lot of people did. And a lot of people were told by, they were justified with all that. They gave them a, uh, a place list, the equipment, time, everything like that. People in town organized and submitted bids, uh, not bids, submitted a bill for services ready.
It's unbelievable.
And. And everybody was told that there's no more money available.
I was unaware. I never do that.
No, no, no. This has been done and I've done two flights with him, working with them. And they're very, very good. So it's very upsetting right now to find out in twenty twenty-one if there's twenty-seven thousand dollars in money available. And all of these people submitted bills to the town in good faith and the select board and the county minister told them there's no money available. That is wrong.
So. That's twenty-seven thousand dollars on top of the thirty-eight thousand dollars that was found a few months ago.
It's actually over forty, it's about seventy thousand dollars.
That is seventy thousand dollars that, no pointing fingers, but somebody or some board or something from the town has let almost a hundred thousand dollars go through. And it's, it's another way of showing that there's got to be continuity in the town between, between the select board and town officials.
The only reason I know about it is.
And, and I know, look, believe me, you know, I'm just saying it's just unfathomable that four years later, we're finding seventy thousand dollars from two thousand seventeen. Come on.
Okay, so we wouldn't know about it except for Paul Hatch. He discovered that.
Paul Paul. Oh, and he, he's been good to our town and I think now that he's found it, I think we're gonna follow through.
There's nothing, I asked him, I said, is it, what do we need to do? And he said it's ready to just internally obligate funds. Have we gotten paid for the last one, the forty or whatever? So both of those are supposed to be just within their office. They need to get that obligation done. But I asked them. Yes, that's right. I said, what do we need to do? He said, nothing. It's within here and I'm gonna try to expedite this as quickly as I can. So both approaches should come in. I don't know when.
All of these, all of these bills were submitted in a folder that was two seventeen, like, submitted to our meeting.
Well, it's already, that's, that's what under the bridge, it's already been.
But those bills have already been submitted.
No, I know.
But for the workers.
Yeah. It's already been submitted and it's in the grant folder.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So it's just a payment that needs to be made. Just a payment that's never released.
I see it, right.
All that backup was given to Dana way back in two thousand.
He did say that they had everything there. It just needed to be.
Just make it sure.
No, I asked him specifically because I was gonna work with Linda to do whatever we had to do to get it turned around. So no, in her office, it can take a long time.
Let me ask the point question, how do we get our money?
It's just up to Paul to get it done within their own office and they're gonna, that's it. They just take their own, it's just sitting there in the portal. Each, each submitted everything. We had it all.
I, I just, I feel bad. There were some people up here that worked their ass off. It just got nothing.
Well, I'm, I'm just glad that, you know, we're making progress, um, you know. For, for bridges and we're obviously getting, I, I don't wanna say bonus money, but you know, obviously we're, we're getting money that we really should, you know, all back. So I'm happy with it.
So, so I think I can shed a little light on some of the confusion and law of that. We had, the one numbers we had, new people in place, a lot of that played a big factor in, well, where do I go to get this information and, and all of that? I, I think we have a better handle now that they have realized there is a FEMA call and information does get put in there. You know, recording systems to the FEMA has gotten better, I believe, compared to what maybe was happening in the past from department heads. Especially like the road department. I'm not trying to single anybody out, but quite honestly, in the past, we didn't have somebody within the road department that was staying on top of that type of stuff. And then I would be getting involved as the emergency management director side of the light. And I did try to push some of this stuff off, which is where I got frustrated and said, I've, I've had a lot. So I think things are getting better and I understand frustrations from everybody, but I'm in hopes that, you know, this happens to be a minimal. You know, it's gonna be smoother for everybody.
Okay, hopefully so. I just, I wanna go back to two thousand seventeen and make sure those people that worked the last off get paid.
Then should all be in the portal.
That should mean more than that. No, no, no. It was people that came and volunteered, but they were paid by the hour for their dump trucks, their excavators, their equipment. FEMA, FEMA gives you so much for an hour for keeping these supports.
So these people never got paid.
They never got paid. No.
That's true.
How, how would possibly go back?
You're not gonna go back and get that money. They're not gonna go back and get that money. Take, take a step back for a minute. We had two or three people saying two or three different things at that time as to, within this office, as to what's going to take place during that, during that flood.
Well, the time, the administrator at that time said, you get paid this much.
And I'm not sure that that was the truth.
Okay, I'll just tell you what the town said.
Yeah.
And people submitted their bills.
Yes. So my, my question would be then, if they submit the bills, what can you do with every other vendor? When it, during an emergency, is the town pays that first and then the FEMA reimburses?
The rate breaks in the town, the town never paid.
The town.
Never paid. At one other point. So this other model was only for these, they followed the seventy-two hour emergency part. So people were working. Well, I'm just, just clarifying. So that went into aftermath of the storm when everybody was going crazy trying to fill huge holes and.
There were roads and it's a lot.
Right. So that's, that's what that money was specifically allocated for. The rest of it was the other work that was done later. So they have that separated by their own timeline and factors. But they were getting complete road stuff. Oh, yeah, those huge holes. Oh yeah, those huge holes.
Okay. I, hey, this is frustrating. Um, okay, thank you. Uh, Omar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Commissioners met today and we had a presentation from the county sheriff. Asked for the authority from the commissioners to purchase two new vehicles for the sheriff's department that were budgeted for that. And to get some necessary electronic equipment that is necessary in this day and age, which a lot of us, but I just don't understand that. But for, for what he's doing for law enforcement, he needs, he needs that equipment. So that was all approved by the commissioners. He's using trucks more than cruisers. Cause he gets better mileage with them, they're easier to upkeep and they provide more room when they're transporting inmates and things. And maybe the chief can answer, chief truck can verify some of this. Then we have the county attorney on the schedule, but she couldn't say it because she had a death in the making, so she wasn't there. Then we had a public hearing from one of the social service agencies. And COVID, we're still, we're still picking up the pieces from COVID all over the county. And so it was a social service agency that could not do its services with the money that had been appropriated by federal agency. And so another agency came in and offered to pick up that, that job that needed to be done. And these are the things that the county commissioners are constantly dealing with. Just because the counties are evidently one of those conduits through which a lot of federal money can be made available to other organizations and communities within the town. Then we had a tour of the registry of deeds facilities. I've been doing title searches in New Hampshire for over 42 years. I know I don't look that old. Thank you, George. I appreciate you very much. But the technology, the technology in there is absolutely incredible. Talk about electronic filing of deeds. So somebody in Nevada could file a New Hampshire deed over, you know, over the electronic e-filing, pay the money and sometimes here's, the system for paying money isn't quite as smooth as it could be. So sometimes there's a delay, but
Was there, was there anything that specifically affected town or what?
Uh, not, not at this point, other than just to make sure the town is aware that it should be getting directly from the federal government some market money, some You're aware.
Do you need the American Rescue Plan?
Correct.
Yeah, we talked about that last time. We have 100,000 more dollars.
Okay, that's coming directly to the feds, from the feds to you.
It's coming to the state twice. Cause it goes to the state first.
All right. And this is, and this is one of the problems with ARCA though. We, we get, I attend 10 different workshops and I attend different Zoom meetings from the White House and from other federal officials. And what they tell us unfortunately is different than what actually seems to be happening on the ground. So that's good that you're, you're getting that kind of money. And have they told you exactly what you can do with that money? They talk about infrastructure, water, sewer and bribing, bribing. So
$100,000 never been over on the infrastructure.
And so the, the other thing that's important to know is that the farm manager met with us today. And he's able to keep up the amount of milk that he's shipping and sending out to cause that all is income that helps to keep our tax burden down. So there is not going to be any tax, county tax increase for the town in graphic town. Zero. And, and the number of inmates, excuse me, residents in the department corrections is increasing now with the ports are open. But, you know, it's just a lot of little things that, you know, we're, we're dealing with at county, the county level. So thank you very much for getting this up.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, if I can just say from all, so having said that, confirm this, as of this month, my dispatch fees to graphic county have gone up again, practically. Because they're fiscal years, they're not fiscal year. So the increase comes at a time where I'm not budgeted for six months, although I do have room in my budget to absorb that. So when we say that there are, that county taxes are not going up as a whole, they may not be, but the municipality is like my agency, for example, still feels that. And Andrew, I just wanna bring this up to you because I have been working on a budget where I have not increased my budget for three years. I had increases like this, which I have no control over. So there are increases, but not increases as a result of my putting in for other wants or needs within the police department. So, and this is gonna be another one of those years. And the county's doing a great job with us. I have no complaint to them whatsoever. And I keep using this term, but it is the cost of doing business. I am a working issue. I'm down here, I sit right here, I do patrol out there, I do criminal, you know, and I do patrols out there as a result of that when someone gets arrested or there's more video traffic or want to do work. People see me in climate and wanna do whatever I'm doing there, I actually gotta go to the court. If they see me in one neighborhood, that's where the jailers, that's where the sheriffs, that's where the detectives, that's where the county police officers. That's where probation and parole is. And I can interact with any one of those entities at any time. I did refer going. That's the cost of doing business.
Can I throw a little salt in your mouth? Well, I mean, just to comment on that. You have nothing to worry about. I mean, I wasn't like, if I was looking at you, I wasn't targeting you. I was like
I think you're doing a great job of your, but I just wanna be transparent.
Chief, I don't mean to do this, but can I throw a little salt into the wound? You just exposed. We, the sheriff's department is providing investigative services for a lot of communities. And they can't charge for it because if they're using equipment that they get from the, some of these federal agencies, the federal agencies tell them, you can't charge for the services that you're rendering using this equipment. Like the Secret Service. They give us some electronic equipment for looking out for sexual offenders and so on. And we're, we're doing, we're doing some work. And I can't believe this. I said, we better know this. If we're doing, if we're doing some investigative services in the sheriff's department for people in Vermont, for towns in Vermont. And they said, no, we can't, the sheriff tells us we can't, we can't bill for that. Otherwise they don't need the equipment away. It's very frustrating to deal with a lot of these federal agencies.
Don't take this.
I feel that, that sounds really odd, gentlemen. I understand.
Hang on, you're drifting too far right here. Um, any more public comments?
I just wanna let you know I won't be here the next 12, 13 weeks. I will be gone. And I will, we have Linda, old 90-day review before I do, I'm gonna pull it over. 90 days, I'll start. So I probably won't come in long, but I need paperwork to fill out. Is that ready, Linda? Well, I'll have it coming next week sometime. The administration's coming up. I'll sleep with you. Two weeks, two weeks of not praying. Yeah, I'll work it.
Is that something you would normally withhold, like a non-public review that's got, so I can say this is I'm not saying change based on this 90-day. That's non-public review. You're not gonna be there. So like the next, next meeting, what he
Well, I just have a 90-day review, but I filled out
I filled out a 90-day review, it's got to be done in public. I would want him to wait. I think, I think he would do the discussion with all of these meetings.
I understand. He's gonna be here for another week.
I don't, I don't think this, it's just a matter of medical holiday fame of all of this.
Okay. Yeah, this is Yeah, it seems to be ideal if it was here to be reviewed and done as a non-public. But is reviewed, will it be reviewed in public? It's a little bit of capital, but it's still, still Okay, any other, any other public comments? Okay, are we going to a non-public session now? We have a few non-public sessions in the
All of this. So I've actually returned this week based on our meeting from two weeks ago when you guys discussed, when we all discussed the removal of permission to Baker River for utilizing Hooper Hill adjacent to the bypass trail that was created and the reason for that trail being created. At that time, you suggested that I put some in writing that it would come back to the Thursday. Mr. Lassner agreed to bring that motion to the table today if they don't want it. It was discussed between the president and Paul. And Mr. King originally brought the motion to the table and through first that it would be a pre and postseason walkthrough of the, of Hooper Hill specifically in this case. And everyone agreed to that. So I did email something to Linda and I believe she forwarded it to Mr. Lassner.
I mean, I know you directed it toward me, but it's directed toward the select board, the entire select board.
You were just lucky to read it.
No, no, I understood. Yeah, the whole select board got the email. So, yeah. I know that wasn't specifically on the agenda, but
That doesn't matter.
No, no. Yeah.
Did you just read it for us?
Yeah.
Paul, as we discussed before, you'd have no problem doing just two
I, well, I'm gonna stress it one more time. I have no problem doing it before the season, after the season, whatever needs to be done. But I wanna make it clear that we gotta be careful about setting a precedence about asking for permission before we do work for certain people. If it's done for one, it's got to be done for all.
Guys, whatever, whatever decision you make here on this one road applies to the entire town. So they're gonna be very capable of square this road.
Especially seeing that we have a lot of logging going on here in this town on some class six roads. And I have never seen a logger come in and ask for permission to repair, replace, or use a class six road. And if this is voted on and passes, this is something that is gonna have to be done for everyone.
Not necessarily. If you're just going up there to monitor something and you see damages occurring or something like that, then you can always report.
How about, how about I read this and then we can comment on it? Because I'm not sure exactly what you're saying. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna ultimately vote on something that, you know, the road agent's gonna do repairs on the road.
No, I'm never gonna do a repair on the road.
I'll re, I'll react to it. Yep, just making sure everyone was clear. So Jennifer Carroll indicated in email, there's a request to make a motion to reverse the vote from JFR 2021 and raise state permission to good standing to Baker River Valley Smuggler Club to utilize Hooper Hill Road, Class Six Road with the agreement between the club and road agent to do pre, in parentheses, November and post, in parentheses, March slash April seasonal inspections. so that, I'll be happy to make a motion in regards to that, that you know, pre-November and post-March/April, that there are seasonal inspections that are done. And I wanna make sure it's clear that there's not gonna be any type of there's not gonna be any type of actual maintenance that's gonna be done by the road agent. This is the class six road.
No, no, we can't do that. That's illegal.
There just has to be
Class six road is not maintained by the state.
I just said that, Arnie. I just said that. I wanna make sure. I, I, I'm just telling everybody we're on the same page. I think they're taking this wrong. I'm trying to indicate to everybody per law that class six roads just are not maintained by the town. So I don't, I don't wanna set any precedence that the road agent is going to do interior maintenance. All right.
This is a specific thing. They're asking that the, we had taken away permissions of companies below our parts.
Because you have two roads that are right next to each other.
And after discussing, you know, they told us that it wasn't practical to use that parallel section because it doesn't hold snow well and
We know why.
And we agreed to let them use that portion of the field. And all they're requesting here is to reverse that prior motion. And raise state permission to use that section alone. The only thing I would add is that that parallels the ultimate right out. Right? And that's all they wanted was permission.
Gotta go? Okay, so I originally brought this up. I think that, I like that plan. Paul is willing to do it. We don't expect anytime to do any work. You don't even have to request, even if it's gonna set a precedent, you doesn't even have to request they do work. He can recommend it. And if, if there was damage, we always could rescind it again later. The only thing that I would add to the motion is to not just inspect that section. It's just any class six roads that are being used. Do a quick ride through inspection with a member of the lobby. Just look at it. Not just that one.
This applies to this road. But once we do this vote, it applies to all class six roads. It's you're right in the middle of your committee, your charge of your committee to determine what are the class six roads, how do we treat them, how do we schedule it? Right now, this is a one specific section of one road. If, if we vote this, this will apply to every logging operation that comes in, utilizes a class six road. The entire town.
I guess I only disagree because
Because it, you can't, you can't just do for one and not for all.
I'm just saying that when, like when you go into law, it's, it's a one-time thing usually. It's the landowners first. This is yearly and it's recreational.
For people in class six roads to do that.
So I guess, I'm just saying that they've always used the road and they've come up with a solution that would actually, that's gonna be watched by the road agent. And if there was unnecessary damage being done, all he has to do is come back in and take it away again.
Now, is the road agent gonna have to work with every logging operation in town? He's good enough to do it.
I don't think that's the case.
Oh, there is an RSA, as you know, that anybody doing work, whether private citizens or anybody, is supposed to get permission from the town on a class six road. There is an RSA. All I'm stating here is if we do it for one club, we need to do it for everyone. But that set aside, I wanna tell you what my plan was that I came up with after the last meeting. I had planned on getting permission from the select board, asking chief truck to go with me on a Saturday or Sunday in the fall, early October, early November. Take our four-wheelers up these roads, take pictures of them in the fall. Probably have to walk them in the spring and take pictures again. That's it. Put them on fire. There's no damage, there's no damage. Smuggler Club did no damage. Great, wonderful. We can blame it on somebody else. If there is damage, blame it on Smuggler's. I'm just saying that was, that's all I'm saying. I think that's I think that's more than fair. I think it is.
You can't, nobody, normally would like, if you're going to log, and you're putting money into the road, and you're putting it in there, and the town has never cared, because when someone goes and does that, you're improving the road for the town, everybody. Whereas this is being used yearly all the time. It doesn't have to be this massive precedent where if you wanna put a water bar right on a class six road, you gotta go to Paul. I just think that this is a good way to address concerns of landowners and pay attention.
I think it's a good solution for this particular road. Yeah, I just, I already noticed that people have gone and tried this all class six road, and now the town has more obligations than it needs.
We make it our ready question issue anyways, because it is an RSA.
It's an RSA, they can come to the select board and say, you need to give us permission.
But again, it all falls under the jurisdiction of the highway department. He has control over every road, class one through...
You are, you are a hundred percent right, and I did not know that until I talked to him.
So it is up to the board in the highway department to protect class six roads. It's part of our duty. We don't need to go overboard by making people bond roads. It's like, the town of Warren makes people bond class six roads to protect the ATV trail. And that is the opposite of what you've done. You're protecting them.
There is an RSA that says the town can request a bond for work done by private citizens in the road.
Can.
Can. It doesn't say you have to, it says can.
No, I know, I was just saying that you have to.
I, I don't, I personally, I, I don't wanna go down that road as, working for the town of Warren, I don't think that we need to go down that road requesting bonds, do you?
No, we don't wanna be...
I don't think anyone's saying that.
Okay, I'm just making sure we're all on the same page, that's all I'm saying.
My issue, my issue is right now, you got a committee that's open, they haven't, they're just doing research on the roads, you don't know which you're gonna close, which you're not gonna close. Here we're doing a vote on one small road out of all of them, and I would rather wait and see when the committee comes up with it. It's not gonna snow tomorrow. I mean, this, this decision can be really tough.
That's true.
And I think we should finish the work we're doing with the committee. And, and find out who owns what roads, you know, who's obligated to it, establish the rules, get the rules, get some bars down solid so we vote for the whole town. And then, you know, this sounds like a reasonable plan, but I think we should be making it down long after we establish the rules on class six roads.
Uh, no, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I would respectfully request that you actually return the permission that was taken with misguided information initially, based on the call to peril.
We felt that we made a good research.
And many people watching felt that it was a decision based on false information. So we're saying the club didn't do anything wrong, nor did the selectmen, or the highway department, or anybody, even residents, come to the club and say, hey, you know, there's some maintenance, excuse me, you didn't give me the floor, excuse me. You didn't. I had no imagination. But nobody came and said, hey, there is damage to this road, let's talk about a solution. Privately, called to a place to a state bureau, making accusations by one of your selectmen, and then the vote was passed without, without finding the club, or the landowners, or anyone. And you took the permission away, which is really good business. It's not good, this is not good business. And the club and the town have been in business together for a long time. This permission's been in good standing for a long time. So I would ask, you're right, we're not gonna snowmobile on next week, but out of principle, the permission should be returned, based on the committee's findings, although I'm getting mixed messages on the purpose of the committee now, because June first, it was, I'm making a motion to form the committee to identify roads for discontinuance, but last night, by many people, it was, I, this committee's here to identify roads, look at maintenance issues. By no means is this committee formed to form discontinuances. Yet you did say that again. So if, maybe you need to, if you could clarify for us the purpose of the class six road committee, that would be great. But in the meantime, we're not gonna snowmobile tomorrow, but we shouldn't be falsely accused or the laws or the authority to put in that place. It just shouldn't be. And I was at the road committee meeting, not at the club last week.
Can I just speak to this real quick? I think, I know there's a lot of frustration on a lot of people's part, between snowmobile clubs and people that own land and everything, I get it. I don't, I don't own land and what work. But I believe that between now and September, October, that there can be a plan in place to use that section on Hoover Hill. I personally have a plan. It wasn't the right time last night to discuss snowmobiles on the trail, didn't even know what class six road. That road might not even be a class six road. It's a very good possibility from what I understand.
Right, which basically wouldn't have rights either.
So that's right. So I, I think if we can just hold off till our next meeting, I have a very good idea, especially seeing the snowmobile club has said that they are more than willing to do a little maintenance to this class six road. And I have a wonderful, wonderful idea for that. And it's very easy, and it's fairly inexpensive, I mean, it's only a thousand feet of road, say, or a thousand feet of road.
It's five thousand three hundred and sixty.
Okay. Maybe I was talking about the parallel trail that was a thousand. But anyway, I mean, it's, it's a very dual thing.
It's not a trail here, not in Vermont. It's not in Vermont, everyone.
It's five thousand three hundred and sixty feet.
Yeah, okay. Half of that road is gone. It's like usable, it's not being used by the club anyway, so it's half the distance of the actual road.
So, no, there's, there's a very, there's a solution. It's a great solution for logging, it's a great solution for anybody that wants to use a class six road to investigate.
I think we should try to discuss this in the committee, with all interested parties there.
Yeah.
Come to a solution and then...
I won't bring up that.
Only if it stands, I hope it stands.
And again, I got to say that there are two different issues. There are two different, I agree, if the class six committee is going to come through and say, yes, it is a class six road, and, and we're gonna operate it as class five, or if they're gonna say it's a class six road, and historically we found out it was already discontinued.
What if it's not?
Then that's fine. But the permission that was removed was mis, was removed from the club under false pretenses and under a poor decision by a member of your select board to telephone the state bureau agency and specifically name people's names and, and misappropri, suggest misappropriation of funds. It was wrong.
Okay, I appreciate your...
So you have time to remove the permission if this, if the situation, classification of the road changes. But the initial vote wasn't made under...
I'm not gonna second this motion.
You never make, you...
I didn't make a motion.
You didn't make a motion. Now it falls to me again? Oh, okay. Well, if I had the floor to speak for a second. I only brought this up because I've watched that road, watched that three darn times. And the upper half of that road is completely gone due to the snowmobiles. That's bad. So the reason why this all took place is because I literally watched this go on, and while fifteen thousand dollars worth of funding over a few years got built into a bypass trail that doesn't wanna be used, they didn't put any money into the class six road, which is washed out multiple times. Two landowners put forty thousand dollars into that road, the club just put zero. So it's not misinformed, there's two roads right next to each other, and if the club wants to be pushing, then I'm just gonna leave it, or whatever. I came in here ready to vote to work with the club, but the general attitude of how that's gone down is just really getting to me, and I'm getting really sick of it. And I think it's a ridiculous thing to have this much stuff go on over a recreational trail that's fifty feet from a recreational trail. That being said, I think that we could work something out where somebody inspects the road, and if things need to be done, they need to be done, and if the road continues to wash out, the club should get removed forever. And I have brought this up to the club resident, he, for three and a half years in a row, in which case he ignored every single time. Before I was on the board, in on the board, not representing as a board member, but as a citizen of Landowners, and it's completely reasonable to have done so. And that's why that happened. He ignored it for three and a half years. I tried to contact Andrew Carroll, the vice president, who owns that land. For four months in a row, I got zero phone calls, zero texts, zero emails, even about things that were there, there was damage on this old property. I tried to notify him. I got nothing from the president and nothing from the vice president, that that's why the club was not invited to this meeting, because they weren't doing their job. So why invite someone that's not gonna come? We took away their permission because we knew that would prompt them to come in and address the issues. The issues were never gonna be addressed until we rescinded that vote, because they ignored you until you do something. It was not going to happen. That's why we're here, and this is way too much of a problem for a recreational trail. We can come up with something, but all the complaints are legitimate. I'm done.
John Molseth. Molseth?
I'm more than willing to go through all of this, and Francis and I are working on the exact road, to find out the classifications, and as soon as I know what it is, we will bring it up in the committee meeting, and I am more than willing to vote for something that is reasonable for the back of the road if they wanna use it. But it's gotta be done in a way where it's not gonna get destroyed. The upper half of that five thousand feet is gone forever and can never be fixed. And in this meeting, the club president, yes, it is true, there's, the edge of the road is fifteen feet higher than the center of the road, and it's down the ledge. No one's gonna bring hundreds of thousands of yards all the way up. Maybe they're the only ones that use it for thirty years.
Yeah, it's in that way.
It's deteriorating every year.
Yeah, it's, it's gone.
It's been nearly a year, but that's not because of the snow.
The rest of that road would look exactly the same, but the landowners have put twenty thousand dollars, not me, by the way, other people have put twenty thousand dollars into those roads. You wouldn't even be able to use that trail if these other people didn't do the work for the club. It'd be gone forever. So we're trying to protect your road and trail.
Let's hang on there. It's just, this hasn't been settled, it's, you can't vote. Now, I was going to, but I'm not going to. So I will be rewinding, and I think the issue's gonna be solved in the committee. And I welcome the snowmobile people to participate actively with the committee.
I'm on the team.
Right. In the past, they hit in the past, they have not worked with the town.
The snowmobile club should have, Zach, one second. The snowmobile, one second. The snowmobile club should have been invited, right?
I highly disagree, because I dealt with them for years. I know that...
They should have been, even whether you, whether we expected them to be there or not, I still think that they should have been there.
I don't feel like wasting my time on people that won't...
I, I, if they wanna attend, that's fine. I mean, I don't, I don't know people from the snowmobile club personally, but I, I literally did not, with the amount of people that were there, I literally did not want a shouting match, and I was afraid all day yesterday that that's what was gonna happen. And I'm gonna tell you why, it's because I got Jordan Ozone, Steve Davis on us, I got three phone calls yesterday screaming at me over this class six road, and I, and I told them, I did not form the committee. I am sitting on the committee as a road agent. I got screamed at three times on the phone yesterday. Me. And I, and I said, if the club shows up here, I'm probably gonna shut it down. Because I, I can't, we're not gonna do that. I think we could be calm voices, and we can get a solution. I know we can come to a solution to keep that road open. It's not gonna be today, it's not gonna be next week, but it's gonna be before somebody's...
If any causes, any problems...
It's been polarized.
I, I think we just need to calm down and let this go for a little bit till we have another meeting, I have a solution, and I'll bring it up to the board.
It needs to snow till December.
Weird. Just to be clear, Mr. Scheller, I, I was at the committee meeting last night as landlord, and I'm a butler, and, and only fronted on three separate class six roads in town. I'm here tonight for the club because we had the discussion on the twenty ninth. So I'm here asking you guys to, to do what you said you said you would do on the twenty ninth, is to repeal that vote.
We reiterate, nobody said we're doing the motion.
I did, I fully am all of that. But to be clear, Steve Davis was present last night on behalf of the club. He's the midwife.
I, I, yeah, I know Steve, but I'm just saying, I, I didn't want a building full of six, eight people, like, we're here at the last meeting.
I think we've exhausted this issue.
So, we're good.
We're gonna go into a non-public meeting.
Second.
You're gonna read off the...
Yes. You gotta get that.
We're gonna read off the honor, Zach.
I don't say ninety-one dash A, both be matters to which the staff of public would hurt or affect the rest of the administration's government, as such persons possess or may exempt, shall extend to include any application of some assistance in tax, aid, and way to improve public access and ability to take out...
Second.
Boyer.
Yes.